Good evening, Mr. Chad, I have the same question as you.
Hi, Mary.
I will call on February 15th, 2025 meeting order to the Bay Area for open application. Dear Lord, we thank you for the stands, for our service, Lord, thank you for our city and for what it means to us. Lord, we just pray as we go about our business, we keep you in our hearts and minds as we do so, and we do what's best for our community when we all work together. Lord, we just pray that you continue to bless us and continue to bless our community, and do as you know to pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, um, I need to approve the agenda, the only change of God is, is Mr. Carroll, his cat, is not, doesn't have anything for appearances, so we can take her off the list.
Okay.
Now, other than that, that's, is that the only change you got, we got a change to?
Probably need to go into the executive session. Put something there, just.
Yeah, 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 again, yeah.
That's it.
All right. All right, so I need the motion to approve the agenda.
I don't think motion there, we don't approve the agenda, but the, it's that, you're working.
Motion, I see, and hold it in favor. All right, motion carried. Um, the man that confirmed it, y'all from the last meeting, um, probably in the approval minutes.
All motion approved, members from the last meeting.
That's it?
Sir.
All right, and hold it in favor. All right, motion carried. All right, Mr. Rogers here, from CKH Group, with some pretty good news for all of us. Mr. Rogers, you'll, I'll give you the floor.
Yes, sir. Mayor Keenan, thank you, um, for having us, thanks for allowing us to be here this evening. Hey, great news for the city of Homerville, all audits are done, and everybody, and you're, you're good to go now to get grants. I'm really excited, uh, and I say this because back on the August 10th of 2023, is when we had our first meeting. And, uh, I want to say it's been a privilege to work with this team, um, since that day, which is the first day. Uh, and I, I made some notes here, but over the years, CKH Group, our organization, we've worked with numerous municipalities throughout the state of Georgia, South Carolina, and even Florida. Uh, and I have yet to see somebody that has been so dedicated, uh, driven to get through what we got through and what we started with, it was extremely complex. And anytime, we, we actually do a lot of work with other municipalities that have had some struggles, so this, this is not a part of the radio, but this was extremely complex. Uh, and the first day of being working with her, I learned that she was a life-long resident of Clint's County, and that said a lot to me, and we've communicated often since that timeframe, uh, about the city's financials, uh, about processes to go through, and how to get better. Uh, and again, she inherited a very complex challenge, and it took right at 17 months to rectify it. Uh, I personally witnessed her grow throughout this process. Uh, I think a lot of people would have walked away or stayed clear of it, and one of the things that I really admire about her, she just, she jumped right into it. And I told her, on the 10th of August of 2023, what did I say, Miss Rittenhouse?
You know how you use the electric, one by at a time.
And that's, and that's exactly what we did. And I told her, I said, listen, we got this, okay? I've been in worse situations, all right, I'm not getting shot at, I'm not cold, and, and, and I'm in a warmer place, so it could always be worse. So she, you know, hats off, uh, her attention to detail, her knowledge was extremely valuable during the closeout processes of five years of the link with financials. Uh, she's one of the most passionate professionals I know, she truly cares about this community. And it's good to see that, it's really refreshing, because I go to a lot of different municipalities, I literally have been to about every municipality in the state of Georgia, at least I've been. And somebody that cares that much about their community, the people they work with, uh, and her family, most importantly, I know she's a family leader. Uh, and she's putting a lot of hours outside, uh, where, you know, I'm getting a text message at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, asking about, you know, a financial situation on that, and she's still, she's still getting it. So I, I really admire that, that work ethic. Uh, her commitment to her profession, the community, her responsibilities, those that she supports and leads, uh, is just a great reflection of who she is as a leader, and, uh, her, her hard work, her sacrifice, uh, and ultimately, what's most importantly, she does everything in an ethical manner. Uh, you know, always, I have this saying, it's not about who's right, it's about what's right. And I feel like she, she fosters that mentality a little bit. Anyways, that being said, I'm honored and privileged to be here, I appreciate the mayor, the council, the staff, for giving CKH Group the opportunity to come in and help. Uh, we employ a bunch of veterans, and it's in our blood to still want to give back and serve. And I find no better way to serve than this role now, even though I'm fat and overweight and probably put past 50 years' test, than to be able to help cities get back in good places so that they can get properly get grants. And I'm, and I'm proud, I'm proud, I'm proud to fly down the path of this community. So with that being said, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Willie Gibbs, I'll see you at GMA, I'm sure.
Sure, sure. We'll be getting around, talking about.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? No questions, I'm in office. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please, sir. All right.
All right, um, Chad, you want to update us on the council page?
Well, tonight is the, the final adoption, we've had the advertisements, we've had the, the reading as we've gone, but tonight, everybody's seen the motion, and I think the copy's in your package, but it's an ordinance to amend the charter to the city of Homerville to amend section 18, the latest of the salary for the elected officials, to provide for the increase in compensation for the mayor and alderman in accordance with OCDA section 36, that certified for, to establish an effective date and to authorize correction of stricter errors and for other, other purposes. Nobody's, nobody's had any questions from me that I'm aware of, or have been made aware of, and everybody seems good to go with the motion to approve, um, the orders. Remember, it won't become in effect until the next election for council, for, for city council.
So I come to favor until the end of, uh, this year?
Well, January, I should say, taking office of those elected in the next, uh, election, which will begin the first 2026.
Hey, would you agree, is that in our meeting, can I ask back to you?
No, I didn't have that on.
Oh, okay.
That's the only time I didn't have.
We can bring it out if you need to, same thing.
I was just talking to Chad.
So if I were in favor of it, we need a, a motion to adopt that resolution, Chad?
That's correct.
Okay. For the council pay, um, increase.
Oh, well, we have got the, uh, the, 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 right.
All right. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, any opinions? All right, motion carried. Also, old business, um, we've put in the paper for public hearings for us to opt out of House School 581. Um, we've got to have three public hearings, they're scheduled for, um, Tuesday, February 20th, 6:00 PM, Thursday, the 27th, at 9:00 AM, and the 27th, at 5:00 PM. Um, I will not be here on the 27th, and for those, like, it doesn't have to be a quorum, it's not a meeting, there's nothing to vote on, so everybody will not be here. Um, Chad, am I right about this, after our last meeting, we're supposed to vote on the resolution and get our name in the state?
Yeah, and as of right now, it's due by March the 1st.
Yep.
There is legislation, I'm seeing, trying to find it, to update it, um, there is legislation pending now to, to change a few things. It started out to, to, to make it May the 1st, and now, of this year, now, I think, the current litigation, as it, the current legislation as it sits, is, is, um, I think March the 1st, 2029, so they're, they're going from extending it to, two months to extending it years about opting in, opting out. So, um, of course, as y'all sit here now, I know that you can rely on that legislation passing, so if y'all want to opt out, if it doesn't pass, then, then, then you've got the 20th.
You've got to be doing this.
About this year, you say, or is it this year?
Yeah, they, they got it pending up there now, so they reckon, the legislature has recognized progress of what they passed last year, trying to fix it, and so.
Um, so if they don't change that, and they got to let them know that I'm not first, um, what we would have to do is, is, is have a call meeting on the 27th, after that public hearing, um, I will not be here then, um, y'all have to have one without me. And then on the 28th, that Friday, um, Lori is gonna pay, like, she's gonna have to drive the school boards up there to Atlanta to turn it in, because it's gotta be in by March 1st, March 1st on Saturday. And so she's gonna drive theirs up there on the 28th, and she said that if we were opting out, like, the school board, she would think I was up there too. Uh, and so we got, there's lots of information on it, if y'all have any questions about it, I don't know enough to, to really answer a lot of questions, fine. But we haven't done anything yet, but if we're gonna opt out, we gotta have these public hearings. And so, uh, we've got time for y'all to talk to Chad, talk to whoever, and let's try to learn more, you know, figure out more about it. Everything I can tell, we do what's probably in the best interest of the city to opt out. But if that's what the legislature's telling me now, on March 1st, that they're gonna extend it, we don't have to let them know anything from right now, correct?
Well, see, it's, it's gonna be a thing, they, they explained it, they probably changed it from March the 1st, 2025, to March 31st, 2029.
But if we don't opt out now, when it's time for taxes next year, will we be in it, or will we be, we would be, we would be in it, which means that our tax evaluation is going up.
This doesn't pass.
It really wouldn't go up.
This doesn't pass, you're in, you can't get out. But even if it does pass, and you haven't opted out.
You're still in.
You're still in.
Okay, all right. And so we got a couple weeks to dive into it more, we gotta have the process started, we are gonna opt out. Uh, and so we will, I will try to get, uh, pamphlet for y'all, put something together with all the key points of the bill, uh, and give y'all a look at. Uh, I know the Lord worked on that, the school board can look at, and keep them inserted instead of all of them, but, uh, like I said, we don't have to make a decision in mind, but we gotta opt out, and we gotta have that process started. Anyway, that's what I'm asking for. All right, um, Chad, the, TID, you probably have a lot of, you wanna talk to us about that?
Yes, um, Georgia DNT has sent over a contract, um, as part of Wyden, Wyden 441. They've recognized that there's gonna be some water and sewer facilities, utilities of the cities, that, of the cities, that's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be moved. What they're proposing is to enter into a contract with the, with the city that provides for $600,000, give or take, that's $606,000, to move those facilities at their cost. Says that the department shall bear 100% of the actual cost of work performed on the local agency's facilities identified on the attached plans. We, we had Joe Brazil today to review the attached plans, to make sure that there's not any other facilities that he's aware of. You know, there could be some, I guess, but he's, he's given his best review, and they have reviewed it earlier, um, and made some changes, and he went back and reviewed it to make sure his changes were on there and included. So it's my recommendation to enter into this, 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 the Wyden project and, and, you know, over, over $600,000 coming from the. So it's my recommendation to enter into this, 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 the Wyden project and, and, you know, over, over $600,000 coming from the state to, to move those facilities. I specifically asked Joe, you know, the other water and sewer improvements that may come, is, is maybe time to make some changes on that, so that, 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 no changes are necessary. The, the, the improvements to the water and sewer system would not cause any problems with, with moving the utility, you know, they are out there, it's the same size pipe, same size everything. So it looks to be good, Joe, Joe seems sure, sure of that. So there's now a motion to approve the, they called a, um, they called a, a contract on utility agreement of water and sewer facilities and authorize the, the mayor, the mayor and city clerk, mayor and city manager that's due.
So do we have a motion to approve the TIA project lobbying contract?
Yeah, I'll put that in the court.
All right, that's it.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Uh, new business, city clerk's position for advertising for that job in the paper. The, um, the applications have to be in by the 21st, is that right, Samantha?
That's right.
Okay, all right, um, and so I would like, the 21st is on a Friday, and so, um, the 24th and 25th, is that running in, 22? Um, how do y'all feel about doing interviews, the 24th and the 25th? Um, we'll do it that afternoon, after everybody gets off work. Is that okay with y'all?
What time, Tom, now?
Um, with as probably applicants, you know, I don't know, you know, wh- whatever time they can get here, maybe starting at 6:00. Um, I don't know, depending on how many.
Well, I think I, I have a, something at 7:00 after the end on the 25th.
On the 25th? Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's due, so we can start on that, yeah, got it, all right, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, all right, so starting at 6:00 on the, the 25th. Is that okay with y'all?
I have to take my gun, I will see you.
Okay, all right. All right, um.
Here, we'll spy your on the back.
Yeah, yeah, we, 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 we'll see. And we got one application in, so, um, and so we'll just see how many bids there are, and take a look at it, and how many interviews we're gonna do, you know, the timeframe for that. But the quicker we can get it, do the interview process, the quicker we can get somebody hired. All right, um, the next thing on the list is, um, the pipe behind Jerry James on Cortland Avenue to Road Street, to Elmer Street, which is a long stretch. Um, when it rains, that area floods, um, that's something Joe said that it would be really exciting. We didn't know how expensive it would be. Joe said that people looked at it before, he would be really excited to put in the import, the cover pipe for the whole area. And so, um, we're gonna get Joe started, and it's two big jobs for the city to do, and we'll have to contract it out. But that's something that we've got to postpone a little before we start taking bids on it, so, you know, it's gonna be suspenseful, we need to weigh on that. Um, the bids for the library roof and an airport porch and roof should be in all the packet.
There's two, yeah, there's, the, the three for the airport and then a three for the library.
Okay. All right, the three for the airport. We've got, um, and this is already again, who, who, who is this, is, is there an insurance company, or is it through?
With the airport?
Firma, yeah.
Yeah, well, we've got a Firma claim, and we've got the claim to Germa, whichever, whichever one.
So somebody else is gonna reimburse us for, for the, yeah, all right, um, we've got three, three bids for the airport. Um, Best Toys Roofing by Austin, the 4800. Michael Roofing is a 6780. And Recovery Roofing is $9,000. Um, no, they're $30,000. I don't think they did that right, but they're, they're $30,000 for the airport. And so the two low bids is Best Toys Roofing by Austin, the 4800, and then Michael Roofing at, um, 6780. Um, one's out of North Carolina and one's out of Bad Austin. Um, the cheapest one is from, from Bad Austin for 4800. And that's for.
Next one, what do you think?
That's what I'm forced to.
You said 4800?
Yeah, that's the, that's the lowest bid.
I brought Austin.
Yeah.
And I can't make it, it's on the worst, because everyone's from, uh.
North Carolina.
Something, it's like, you say, probably, it's not, we all some.
Do you have anything? Cause sorry, it's been an airport place, library.
No, that's a $30,000, two more, you mean?
Yeah, that's for the library, like, he did it on the library house.
Oh, okay.
You got, I had to click when we hit that one. This is library, 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 and that's it. Okay. How you live, that's just.
All right, so we need the, 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 I said, the two loads, the ones from, um, the ones from Bad Austin and the ones from North Carolina, the two loads. So, well, we need a motion to, what's your one other y'all want to say?
Uh, motion, we had checked that we had promised by Austin, uh, uh, we had probably taken bids from way, you go for all of this place.
All right. All right, so that's Best Toys Roofing by Austin, um, for 4800 for the airport. All right, so we got a motion to set their bid. We have a second?
Sir.
All right, all in favor? All right, and both, motion carried. All right, the next one is for the roof of the public library. And this is the same thing, um, our insurance, GoZima, and, uh, Germans are gonna be reimbursing for these. Um, three bids again, the same people, we've got Best Toys Roofing by Austin at $30,250. Um, Showtime Roofing Solutions, $30,500, they're from Poland, Georgia, or Poland, I said, Poland, P-O-U-L-A-N, Poland. Poland, all right, and then, um, Pro Exterior.